Okay, guys, the GoPro's on scatter. You know what this means? You know what this means? This means that, number one, I'm not sure that I can go to the district website and click on the Zoom link and click on the Zoom link and know that I'm going to be able to see the meeting without the circle of death saying I can't see the meeting. Big hint there, guys. The reason my GoPro is on is because I want to make sure that what I say tonight is uploaded in a way that is not compromised by internet access interruptions, tripod malfunctions, strategically placed coughs, grunts, size chuckles, snack munching, and other flatuetic distractions. I want to talk just a tad about what Kelly said. In my world, you can take spatial data, which means this house is here, this phone is here, this is over here, and then you can track that, okay? So I asked a question about an IP address, about the system's ability to look for an IP address. That's the footprint or the breadcrumb that says this inquiry come from that computer. I don't want to know who it was. I want to know where they are. So, for example, Anna Verde has opened back up, they're building houses. How far is Anna Verde from here on Avenue S? It's 10 minutes.
I was going to say 12, but okay.
Are you through?
No.
Anyway, and we both will be in December. So, anyway, let's say that the IP address is spatially tracked and said that hit came from there. Let's say that they go to the Vasquez website. Let's say on the Vasquez website, the first thing they see is my address to the class of 2020. How touching and stirring, but is it relevant now? No, not really. Not at all. I want to know, do they get to the sixth page before they burn out and go somewhere else? Where are they stopping? Where do their, where do they hit? My YouTube channel, I can tell what people start watching as soon as they see my face, it's over. But, at the end of the day, you can track where these people are going, what they're interested in seeing, and where you lose them. Store that away with Kelly's stuff. Now, I'm going to get into some history and some very seedy stuff. I'm going to make up words as I go. The message in my comments, I'm not trying to steer votes. I know what it's like to have people up here bullying you, if you remember the old board. I don't care how you vote. The message in my comments on this item would be about what we can do as a board to support the administration of this district. I'm not talking about the students, we're not talking about the staff. Everything good? We're talking about the administrators who support all these other people. Separate that. That's, this is the administration over here. We're supposed to support them. That's why we're elected. We don't run them. They run the school district. I got 20% of running him. Understand that. This agenda item, in my mind, is a critical piece to that, to the end of this district. Doing the work to be successful in capturing and maintaining the district share of the educational marketplace. That's what you all are here for. Understand that. We are here to make sure that the person that runs you all is competent in doing that. This is not a popularity contest. This is a measurable job performance. I'm seeing that in here tonight. I'm very happy. Do you know how rare it is to see me happy? I only have 17 more pages to go. During my comments tonight, when you see me go like this, I'm not crazy. When this goes on the internet tomorrow, the things that I say people have said and done will be, there will be links, you can click on it, you can watch the circus for yourself. I'm going to go back about 10 years and tell you what went wrong with this district. In six days will be the anniversary of my first appearance at a board. It's the same. 10 years ago, six days from now, I began my involvement with this board. Five years in the audience where you all are sitting, and five up here. So let's say I'm a veteran, I've been in the trenches, I know what is happening. And the Acton-Aguadose news, I love the Acton-Aguadose news because, good or bad, they memorialize everything. If there was ever a court case, they would want this for discovery, trust me. So thank you for capturing everything you do. Okay, I work in the public sector. I've been in the public sector for 21 years. I run a division of a city that is world-renowned. I didn't get there and stay there because of my charming personality and my boyish good looks. I am there because I know how to deliver a program that's in line with the expectations of a high-class system. I expect that up here. When I hear the things I'm hearing tonight and telling you, "You are a business manager. I like what you're selling," both of you, that's what I want to hear. I'm not here to be popular. It makes Christmas far too expensive. But the first thing I learned in public sector business was this: You do not tax people and not give them representation. Who's the history major? Why did this country break away from England? Because they sent a bunch of people over here, goofy enough to come over here, and then pay 60% taxes. No taxation without representation. So simply put, if you are a public servant, the quickest way to get in trouble is for you to start messing with taxpayer money and moving it around where it's not to be spent without authorization. I want to talk about 2013 and the FICMAT report. The FICMAT report came out because we were going into negative certification, meaning you can't pay your current bills and you will not pay your bills for the next two years. So what LACO said back then is, "Live within your means." That's the bottom line, live within your means. So, little bit after I started going to school board meetings, the leadership at that time was summed up as best like this. We had a principal at the high school that was auto-promoted to superintendent with no public process. Who runs a hiring process using public funds to pay people and auto-promotes people to jump like that? In my world, that calls for a structural deficit that somebody doesn't want to talk about something. Anyway, that brand-new principal-turned-supervisor took the district down the trail of using charter authorization as a revenue source. I knew back then, a four-year-old knows back then, anybody that's a taxpayer in this district that tries to think about the school district collapsing here, what's their biggest concern? If we get pulled into Palmdale, we're going to have to pay those bond rates on our properties. Tell me I'm wrong. When I ran for this board, I made sure that it was by election, not appointment. My campaign platform was very clear. It was based on the things I had been saying all along, all the way. And that in order for this district to be sustainable, you needed to reduce fiscal dependence on out-of-bound charters, you restore the focus on local students, and you restore the good name of the greater, of the district and the greater educational marketplace. Why does, why do the colleges now want to come here and offer us? Because we don't have a trashed reputation as being rogue thieves of taxpayer money. Nobody wants to associate themselves with you when, when it affects the contracts that they have and the agreements they have with LA Unified, Long Beach Unified, Beverly Hills Unified. They don't want to associate with you. That's why we couldn't get to classes. Anyway, my campaign platform was very clear. It was printed in the election ballot for 2016, which is still a matter of public record. Remember me talking about October 17th, 2016, a few meetings ago? Well, on that date, I carried my platform into the Acton Town Council Candidate Forum. Here's the first one. I'm going to give you a link to the meeting. I want you to watch it. I want you to look at the faces, see if any of them seem familiar to you. See how they act, see what they said. I was greeted with the Acton Town Council president on the, at the time. So, I'm not talking about the Acton Town Council. People keep coming in here, "I don't like the way you talk about the Acton Town Council." I'm not talking about the Acton Town Council. I'm talking about if you were the president of the Acton Town Council on October 17th, 2016, I'm talking about you, and you know it. So, I was immediately hit with, by that president challenging my opposition to the charter plan. "What's your plan, Fallsgraph? Live within your means." So I was teed up to have the president of this board, think about this, the acting president. This would be like Tim Jorgensen walking into the candidate forum that's coming in October of this year and injecting his bias into a candidate forum. In what world does that happen? And he was teed up, at the time, the president inserted his bias, basically called me misinformed and attempting to mislead the very public that I was seeking the votes of. Look, click the link. Watch it happen. That night, the public of this town, October 17th, 2016, the public of this town was misled by its own leaders who were either being false in the information, or they were too naive to understand basic principles of why this country broke away from England. Take your pick, it doesn't matter. The public was sucked into believing that the charter plan and associated finance were stable, legal, and sustainable. I want to say this: This board has been constantly bashed. There's platforms being set up. So just in case there are any confusions about the public comments from the podium that I don't like the Acton Town Council, or that I am consistently violating my own civility statement that was one of my, the year I was president, is one of my initiatives. Do you think that I should just love these people and give them respect when they come up in my own community and call me a liar? And then stand up here at the microphone every couple of weeks now and say, "I don't like this, I don't like that, I don't care what you like." Watch the movie. Fast forward, I won the election. Within 45 days of the 17th of October, 2016, meeting, the superintendent, who was the architect of the plan, resigned five minutes before I was sworn in. Three board members subsequently voted to put that person on as a fiscal budgetary consultant, inform our budget, while him and a former employee simultaneously, while serving as a consultant to this district, informed its budget, moved first over $350,000 of the educational sped funding, and then turned around and pulled more than $600,000 of enrollment. So we're talking about $1 million going out the door right away, while you're serving as a consultant. Three board members voted for that to happen. So what did I do? Immediately took up the practice of putting these charters through the wringer and saying, "What are you doing here? What are you doing there?" Watch the old board meetings. I'm getting tore up by everybody up here. Why are you asking that question? You're all paranoid. Why, there's nothing nefarious going on here. I recall the Valiant Material Revision Hearing. I asked questions while being assaulted by my board. Acton-Aguadose News, you're great, you captured all this for me, thank you. Without you, I wouldn't be able to give you this story. But I asked the very questions of that charter, of the people standing right there while I was being assaulted by my own board, that the grand jury, our superintendent, Larry King, Lynn David, all these people were coming in to try to fix this mess, were being questioned by the grand jury. Isn't that great? But the grand jury, the district attorney and the judge, were asking the same questions when they indicted these people for the theft of $50 million. And let me make something very clear to you. Without that board, the ones that voted against my obvious protest, Valiant would never have been able to abscond with $50 million of taxpayer money. They opened the door to it while criticizing me. It's all in the movies, watch it. I want you to think about that, $50 million. What did Vasquez cost to build? What was the district's share? 12 million. We could have built another four Vasquez campuses with what these people stole. $50 million. But guess what? None of it was our money. It wasn't ours to take. So, while I'm being constantly bashed in the newspaper, the AV Press, the Santa Clarita Valley Press, and even the LA Times is touting me as an advocate for taxpayer responsibility and funding. This is the LA Times, that's me. That's our buses. You can tell it's me. I got a fat belly. Look, mommy, it's me. I got the best fat belly in town, right here. But I can't get any respect out of my own press in this town. I'm holding it up so everybody can see it. Get that on film. Moving on. Within six months of the October 17th, 2016 Acton Town Council meeting, the AEA charter began to unwind. 14 months later, the charter was defunct. When the board president took after me in the Acton Town Council meeting, he said that they had MOUs. This district had MOUs that would protect the district from any financial liability related to the charters. I specifically said special ed. The debts of that charter were dumped on this district despite the board president's guarantees that they could not be. Anybody at that table right there, in fact, I might be quoting one of them right now, said to me, "For your MOU to be of any value, you have to have the money behind it, or it's worthless." So there were settlements. Those kinds of settlements are discussed back there in closed session. Think about this. You're sitting in closed slash session. You are fixing what these other people ran from. They go to Capitol, they go to Apple Valley. Get on the internet, you can find them now. Nice list of former employees. But you are sitting back there while you're trying to fix it, having mud slung all over you from somebody else, and you have an attorney telling you, "This is the best you can do." So your decision-making process is based on, "Oh, do I want them to take $500,000 from our kids? Or should we let this go to court, and when the jury hears it, they give an award of $3 million?" So we're back there making those decisions. Anybody that's ever sat in closed session knows that you can't come out here. And for you to sit in closed session, that would have meant that you have sat on a board at one time in your life, and you should know better. It's going to get juicy now. The reward that this board has had, and I'm talking about that one down there, I'm talking about the one over here who have not been noisy, who have kept silent while I've been running my mouth. We're getting bashed in the local newspaper. "Oh, there's nothing to report out of closed session, nothing to report out of closed session." You know you can't report this stuff out of closed session. But it's almost as if the public is being groomed to believe that because we can't report this stuff when you know we can't, that we are hiding information from the public. Thank you very much. Well, guess what? I got a surprise for you all. In the case of the AEA failure and the financial impact on the district I'm talking about, there are five people besides this board who know exactly what happened. Do you know why? Because they were on the board of AEA when it was unfolding. And those people were informed in closed session. "We got this parent suing us for this, we got this parent suing us for that, we're doing this and this." All that's being dumped on them. Well, the person that was brought in to glide path AEA into the ground and dump the debts on this district was smart enough to send emails out to parents talking about schools closing. Zoom in. Schools closing. Different alternatives when boards didn't approve your charter. Encouraging you not to talk about it on Facebook. That person was smart enough to make sure that they documented that the board of AEA knew exactly what was going on. I have emails that show the names of these people. Why? Because I was a parent of one of the students. Now, if you're a great investigative reporter, you would want to know who these people are. Because they can tell you now. What have they got to lose? Their organization's defunct, their board has collapsed, and if they said, "Yeah, he's right, this is what was coming in front of us, unfortunately, we didn't mean to do it," or whatever, what are the other board members going to do? The other four board members are like, "Dude, why are you talking about this now? I'm trying to get this behind me." So, what would happen if one of those said, "Here's what happened." "Oh, the other board members are going to run to the DA and go, 'Hey, Brown Act violation.'" "No, they're not going to do that." And if the DA looked at it and said, "The remedy is already in place. Your district is bankrupt, your board is..." I don't even want to hear this. But there are names on here that you might find very interesting, indeed. Now, again, if I were an investigative reporter, I would say, "Hey, Fallsgraph, I want to see that thing that you put up there. See, it's got a triangle on it. It's a red triangle, so ask me for it." Maybe the Acton-Aguadose News will ask me for it, print it, maybe. Maybe not. Okay. So, what's going to be said here is, "Well, Fallsgraph, what's your idea? Live within your means." Well, we can't do that. And besides that, while we were doing this, we got $4 million a year. That's great. Well, one charter come back and said, "We want our money back." The DA said, "We want our money." Why didn't the rest of them want their money back? Well, because there's probes into that. You start asking for your money back, then the feds come in, they start looking around. Maybe some people didn't want to go through that. I guarantee you, if I was sitting on the board of one of those charters and I found this out, I'd be chasing this district for money. Statute of limitations is passed. How terrible our superintendent has to sit here and listen to this. But the charter was a moneymaker, right? Hey, I got an idea. Why don't I compare this to the growhouses that are popping up in our community? Hey, they're moneymakers, right? Let's say I set up a growhouse. I come in, I spend $750,000 for one, right? And then I spend $250,000 to equip the houses on my, you know, if you see like 74 air compressors, you might, it might be sound wrong, right? Anyway, I set up my growhouse, I peddle, say, $4 million a year, same as the charter revenue, dope out of that house, and I get busted because it's illegal. It's not permitted. Should any of them be permitted? I know that all the dope that shows up in our bathrooms, that's all from permitted growhouses, right? But anyway, I'll lose, I spend a quarter of a million dollars setting up the growhouse, the feds come in, everybody comes in, "They don't even arrest these people, they give them a ticket." Like, "I jaywalked with my bicycle, here you go. Don't do this anymore." So then they bussed up the house, "Oh, here, let me smash your stuff." So I got $250,000 gone, plus $250,000, that's a half million dollars. But I still made $350,000, or 3.5 million, right? Yay, I'm the winner. Well, guess what? Why am I comparing these two? Because they're directly comparable. Both are illegal, both create false economies, they collapse community faith, and they undermine the idea that there is a shortcut to good, hard work. Then what's really amazing is at the end of it all, the architects of the plan, whether it's a growhouse or a charter school scheme, charter school scheme, districts, what does that say? School district caught in fraud scheme. Acton-Aguadose agrees to pay back $727,000 on one charter. That's what it says. I didn't print that myself. Anyway, the same people who criticized me, attacked me in front of my own community and called me a liar, come along later and say, "Well, I'm going to criticize you because you didn't use the illegal gains to build my pet project during the case of the growhouse." "Well, you didn't get out of there before you could build another growhouse." But what we have happening in here is, "Why didn't you work out a payment plan with the DA, right? Sorry, this is not budget auto-sales." They didn't want to hear that. Or, maybe you could drag a bunch of kids in and plead with the judge, use kids as human guilt shields. "This is not a charter renewal. The judge didn't care about that. You're a criminal." Or, here's the best one. Prop somebody up to come right up there and say, "Why did this board rob the community of the tennis court, the swimming pool, and the basketball court by not choosing to use the illegal funds as a funding source?" I know that Mr. Merza, Dr. Merza, is just waiting to put an application in to LACO or the state of California or USA to say, "Hey, you know what? Yeah, we're going to build this, and the funding source is charter revenue or a growhouse or some other thing I got going." "Oh, the growhouse we're going to use is permitted." Right? No. Wait a minute, didn't I ask for all that to be on the agenda? I don't guess you have to put it on there now because I just explained it all. I'm going to turn to the LACO Budget Review Letter to President Jorgensen, which is why I read that in the record. It says very clearly, there's huge, huge liability in the charters because back in the old days, you lose one kid at 3.5%. You have 28 kids that are out there that you don't even know. Exposure on 28 kids instead of focusing on one. I want to read you something pretty funny. Love the Acton-Aguadose News. I got two of these, by the way. August, or April 4th, 2012, the superintendent talked about a charter school that they would ultimately, that the district would receive about 3.5% of the charter's gross income, potentially $100,000 to $250,000. Ready? He hoped it would save the district his salary. I love that motivation. Hey, give me the money, right? I'm sorry if I'm upsetting you. So, the message from LACO is this. This is the same one eight years ago. You've got to live within your means. And had somebody done that five years before the FICMAT report in 2013, you would not be in this situation. I would not be up here. That in itself should be reward enough for somebody to live within their means. We've done the corrective work to get to a point where we can hire somebody who's actually silly enough to come in here and say, "Hey, me and my team, we're going to go out there and take our market back. We're going to focus on your local students, their educational success, and maintain your identity and brand value in the educational community regionally." So what I have said tonight, it will be all over the internet tomorrow, so go ahead and spin it any way you want, make a top out of it. Watch the movies. I want to talk a little bit about customer service with this. Hey, news flash, I hung the bolt last time on purpose. Because with these two gone, we've done the work. I don't care about Mint, I don't even know who Mint is. I understand the process that they use. But I also have a respect for the superintendent to do the work, to come forward, and not be second-guessing them while I'm building the platform at the expense of the people who've done the work that you created for us to do. I'm not interested in that. But, it was with great concern that I read Julie's comments in the AV Press about this. Now Julie writes what's said, and she doesn't have a bunch of dots and question marks and whatever in her articles. She actually, so, I think they have a She actually said, I think they have a budget over there where they can keep keyboards that don't malfunction. But it was basically saying that our district has employees that are untrained, front-faced employees that are untrained. I take great exception to that. Look at me. I'm in the Los Angeles Times for what I am, but yet I'm representing an organization where people don't know what to do? I inquired, when this first come up, I don't just sit up here and listen to myself talk. I asked this district leadership, were the employee unions, associations consulted about this? Did they present any objection? Now, I don't see the union rep being shy. I mean, he'll stand up there and tell me that my hair is a mess. So they're not shy at all. And I didn't hear anything from them. In fact, I think that they're not worried that somebody's going to come in here and paint them out to be anything other than the fine employees that they are. So I want to address a couple of concerns here. This is coming from me. If you're a parent and you want the truth, you come to the right place to get it. If you believe that this district continues on with a hiring practice in which positions are filled or even influenced by the affluence of influence, affluence, look that word up, then you are wrong. If you believe that people are auto-promoted without an objective review of a qualified pool of candidates in which the best one that applied is selected, you are again wrong. And if you are an employee and you are unable to be the face of the district, to be friendly to your customers and conduct yourself in a positive manner, to understand your job description, understand that if you are being paid to be at work, then you be at work if you feel that you are not qualified to do your job, if you feel that you are not placed properly, if you feel that you don't understand your job description, that you need training or counseling, you need to contact HR immediately. They will be responsive to you. If they are not responsive to you, then we are here to make sure that they are responsive to you. Back to the Ken Show, that wasn't enough. I have worked for the MGM Mirage Resorts Corporation, the Disney Corporation, for a city with a name and a brand that is recognized immediately worldwide. I have run a division of that city. The buck stops here on that division going into my 21st year. And again, I don't have a glowing personality or boyish charm. I'm good at what I do. The people that I run are good at what they do, and as a team, we produce the kind of results that everybody who does what I do wants my job and my team's job. I don't know what it's like to work for a second-rate agency. If you know, please call me. I want to know how you feel. Because I'm completely ignorant of that. My expectations for this district are no less than what I put on myself at work. I'm going to say this because I have the right to say this. Oh, by the way, I'm talking about Chad, too. Chad works for these corporations. It's not about being nice, it's about, you get them trucks there, you film the show, and you don't have a bunch of crap going on, or you're fired. Tell me I'm wrong, Chad. Sorry to drag you into this. But I have the right to say this because I've worked hard to have the right to say to this. Of all the top-end organizations I have worked for, of the hundreds and thousands of people that I have encountered that work for these corporations, I will stack Shiloh, our own Shiloh, up against any and all comers in the area of customer service. And I would very much expect that if I get nothing but my face slapped in the newspaper every week, that this district should be able to, on my behalf, recognize Shiloh for her customer service contributions. And then I would say, "You continue to look because there's many more like her in this district that just are nice to people." With Shiloh, you don't have to be anybody to be everybody in this district. When you fail one kid, you fail everybody. Oh, last page. Check it out. I just spread COVID to this paper. Board members and public, thank you for your patience and my comments tonight, because I've been waiting 10 years to make them. I want to move on now because there's a lot of baggage that's got addressed. Spin it any way you want.